convene the board meeting for this evening. Go on to, uh...
He didn't refresh till she changed stuff. Mine did. His numbers were off, right?
Alright, we'll go on to, uh, convene for work session, correct? I think that's where we're at. 4.1 workstation, public participation information. Each time we address an item, talk about it, at the end we'll ask the community or the public if there's any questions there before we go on to the next one. What we do is we'll go through all of the workstation items before we do anything. I guess we won't have to do any of them, but after each one we'll talk and ask if anybody has any questions about it and go from there. Okay? 4.2 college credit plus agreements for 2016-17 school year.
Yeah, before we start, Mrs. Cook couldn't be here this evening. Ms. Vincibles at lunch broke a tooth in half she just had worked on. So, she sure, "Well, I didn't think about it."
You didn't drum up business for one of our board members?
Yeah. I didn't think about that. But nonetheless, that's what I'm covering for Mrs. Cook this evening. We have three different pieces here, and I think Mrs. Cook responded to it. So, she explained a little more detail.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
I don't know that she, uh...
I don't see her response.
I don't think Amber got there.
I don't. I sent those.
Oh, she just sent it to me. So, Miami's, uh, Miami University's college credit plus rate is at the ceiling of $166. Cincinnati State... Yeah, Cincinnati State is at $41.50. Cedarville is at $166 at the ceiling. Sinclair is at $41.50. Wright State is at $166. So, it looks like to me they're either at the bottom or extreme top. If we're required to have an agreement with one school, my assumption is that schools like Cedarville are allowing us to have agreements with others as opposed to writing their own. So Cedarville, even though we do business with them, they don't do contracts like the other colleges do.
And my question was only about what is the impact of that? It sounds like practically there is no impact to that. We can, our students can still go and take...
Correct.
That's all I was just asking. The fact that we don't have an agreement with them, what does that mean in practical terms? It sounds like not much.
Pretty much what happens is that one of the kids comes to us and say, "We want to go to Cedarville." Where somebody is going to have to call Cedarville and figure out how it works.
It's very difficult, because that's what my kids went through. It's a very difficult process to work through, but it works.
Right. So, but we do have the contract with Sinclair, which is the one we've always had. Miami University's there and Wright State's there. Basically, we have the same contract as every other school. You can't negotiate these. They just have one set contract. Early on, that was different. There could be a little negotiation until college credit plus came into effect. Because at one point, I think we were able to get credits from Sinclair for $20, $20, $24, $50 or something like that.
So who is it that chooses? Does a student choose which university they want to go to?
Correct.
Okay, we don't require it for...
No, dude. And we're not, when we stand up and talk to the parents, we have to give them all the rules. And we can't say, "Parents, to keep your taxes lower, we wish you all would go to Sinclair until it's $41.50."
Even though that's a true statement?
Yes. I mean, it's something like this, Dr. Blunt. Parents, we're going to spend about $300,000 this year if you all go to Miami University for $166 an hour. If you'll just go to Sinclair, it'd be about $125, and that's almost $275,000 we can leave in that general fund and not have to come back to you for money.
Well put.
You can't say that.
Can't say that.
Is that on video?
That's the deal.
That's what you can't say.
I'm a Miami graduate, so I think they did a nice job. My sister graduated. They did a nice job because she graduated from there, let's put it that way. So I don't have anything against the colleges, but it is amazing that one charge is $166 while another charge is $41.50 for the same cost.
And do we have a sense, again, I recognize we're not steering them to one or the other, but do we have a sense for how that mix has sort of fallen out?
We know better. Terrick can comment better on that, but it is a convoluted, you can't project it at all. We're paying for yoga and J-bike, and we're paying better money.
It makes sense, it's all there for two minutes, and the left is, they can take it.
Wow.
As a parent whose kids are using some college credit plus, what we've looked at, like we chose Cedarville because there was a finance class that met our high school requirement, and it was online. And my kids didn't, we didn't want them driving and taking, they wanted to be on the high school campus. So that met our need, because they were able to sit here in study hall and do their online class, and it met that need. So that's why we chose that. But now, they're choosing, this summer they're taking classes, and they're doing them through MUM and something else, because they're, um, it's, once again, it's online, and it met that need. And you also have to look at, like with Cedarville, you have to take an ACT in order to get accepted. So that is the, except, in order to get in, it's much more difficult at Cedarville versus Sinclair and MUM, it was a very easy process to get in. So as you're going through the process, it depends on what you want to go through to get in. So you're looking at a lot of different things. So Sinclair's going to get a lot more, because they make it really easy to go through. MUM, really easy to get through. So there's a lot of different factors that you're looking at. So as a parent, you want to look, yeah, it's great to look at it, that the tech, you know, it's only using as much tax dollars money, but yeah, you're also looking at how's it going to work for your family. We don't want to leave campus, so that was a factor for us.
And just if I can plug in for a minute, I just looked up the credit cost for, like, the regional campuses of Miami, and there is a discount for our district. So MUM is per credit hour on $199.
How much?
$199 per credit hour. If, like, I went and just took a class at MUM, it'd be $199 according to their website.
And what are we paying?
$166.
Yeah, so I mean, so when you multiply that, you know, hours, yeah, so there's a break.
Any other questions? 4.3, discussion of tax abatement of Victory Wholesale Group, city school compensation agreement. Mr. Pannell?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Victory Wholesale Group has requested from the city a tax abatement to do an ex, uh, expand one on their current facility that's located within the Springborough city boundaries. This falls under the law that a community reinvestment area, which allows the cities to give tax abatements. There was a change in the law in 2004 that put, you know, locations, there are certain locations, and then sides of the agreements, you had to have approval from the school district that's tied to that area before the city can enter into an agreement. So that's why this came to, before you tonight. The abatement is for a 100% abatement for 15 years. Currently, on that, those three little parcels of property that are vacant, we currently collect about $9,505 in tax dollars from that. The current main facility that they have, we collect approximately $106,630 on that main piece of property that they have their building on right now. The reason they've asked for the abatement is that, you know, they've got another operation in Monroe, and then they've got some offers from Kentucky that they would like to bring together their operations in one location. And they'd really like to do it here. But they, you know, they say they've got an offer from Monroe and also from Kentucky. But, you know, they've been here since 1987, longtime resident, longtime supporter of, you know, Springbrough. So, we're just, I'm just providing you the information, and we provided this information to Larry Budd the other day, that if, uh, if they did the $10 million project without any abatement, then we would receive approximately $134,000 a year on that. If they did. Now, if they, if they don't get abatement, they might do it, they might not. Based upon the way a lot of things are right now, I think it's probably likely that they might move if they don't get the abatement, because I think they will get the abatements other places. And then what will happen is if we, if we do not, if we approve the abatement, the city is then required to provide a payment back to the school district for one half of the, um, the income tax that they collect on that new piece. So that would be a payment of $37,500 per year.
Is that just during the 15-year abatement?
That's during the 15-year abatement. Once that 15th year happens and the abatement stops, then the payment from the city would stop. And then also, if, um, there's a tax incentive review committee that meets on an annual basis, that follows the school district, the city, the county, and then the Warren County Development Group, to ensure that the tax abatements are on schedule and doing what they're supposed to do. So if, for some reason, this doesn't meet those requirements, they don't do what they're supposed to do, they don't bring in the amount that they're supposed to, the TERC, is what it's called, can actually either sometimes reduce the amount of abatement or even suspend the abatement early if they're not doing what they're supposed to do. So there are safeguards to ensure that they bring into the community what they're saying they want to do. So what's on the agenda tonight are two different actions. One is to give the city the authorization to enter into the agreement with Victory Group for the abatement. The other one is the revised agreement that we have with the city, because we currently have an agreement with them that, under the old CRA rules, we get 35% of the income tax for the baited. That's the one that's, that's up there, that's closer to Austin, Miami's. But the, which we didn't have any say in that one. But because of this one being the size it is and under the new 2004 rules, we get 50%, so that's why there's two actions that will occur.
Any questions? I know, you know, as long as I've lived here, it's been difficult, because most of the tax money's raised by residents, and we don't have a lot of industry. All that area out there that's part of our city, Franklin gets on the other side of Pioneer, we've tried to, you know, annex that. I think it's better to go through with this and not risk losing them maybe altogether, and maybe, you know, it'll help with some employment here too.
Long-term, it has to sit.
I agree, and I think it also shows an appreciation that they're a part of our community. I don't think we want to lose them.
We have known it for a long time.
Yeah. And have you a vacant building?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, the $134,000 if they were to build this, that we would receive, I should say, without the abatement. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that that's sort of a unrealistic number from what they've sort of submitted to us. I mean, I think it mentions the reason that they're, uh, they're seeking the abatement is really because there's some wetland remediation, some graphic issues, and some expenses that I believe are in the $1.9 million range. So, I don't really see them, if we were to not approve the abatement, I don't see them really, they're not going to do the project here. So, you know, that whole comparison of you're foregoing roughly $1.5 million, you know, that delta between what we receive from the income tax and the property tax, it just, it gets sort of made up. Because I don't see a scenario where they're actually going to build without the abatement. So I think our choices are, if you want to, you know, have a, you know, potentially this employer leave, have a vacant building, or do you want to provide this, which helps the community and it helps us? We'll pick up that $30-something thousand, you know, as well. So, I mean, I don't, I don't really see a scenario where this is, you know, I think this is the right thing to do. I basically, I think that other scenario is sort of unrealistic and not really a fair comparison, because there's no way that material is...
And it's not like we're losing $134,000, we don't have it already, so...
And I don't think we'd ever get it.
Right. But we have the possibility of bringing, you know, what they say, 75 employees to the area. So we're going to gain residents, which, you know, brings more tax income, and, you know, to the possibility of, you know, future growth with the company. I think it, you know, makes sense.
Yeah. One thing, and I know I asked this question to John and he responded, but I believe we can just go over it again, has to do with the resolution with the city. I was reading it, I know that there's, um, there's some language in here that if new employees don't generate over a million dollars, you know, that they're not required to make a compensation payment to us. It sounds like that's very unlikely.
Correct.
We're estimating five million.
Correct, we're estimating five million.
And then you said, also, that review committee, I mean, if we were in a situation like that, where it was below the...
Yes, the TERC would meet, and then it wouldn't likely either reduce or even remove the tax abatement. Because if they were that far down under what they were estimating, there would, there'd be, they would not have met their $10 million goal either of doing the construction, because there's just no way that... With that size, what they're adding, or what they're adding, because right now their property is valued at about $7 million. So they're, they're more than doubling in value what they're going to be doing there. So they definitely should easily hit that five-week mark, especially since they're already got, you know, their intent is to shut down Monroe and bring those folks up. And that's, you know, that's the number of people around it.
And the section four in this agreement with the city that talks about their sort of cap?
Right.
If they were to add so much that exceeded what we would have received in property taxes, sort of caps...
Correct. That's right. So if that, if that, if so, if the, the, if the income tax that the city receives is more than, if our, their payment to us is more than the amount that we would have gotten from the regular real property tax...
Which is roughly the $134,000.
$134,000. So if, for some reason, they bring in, you know, instead of five million, 50 million, then the city would not have to reimburse us for more than $134,000. So it's, it's an unrealistic piece.
Yeah, no, it's both the, yeah, I was a little uneasy about the fact that, you know, we don't have a guaranteed minimum, but you have a cap. It just felt a little inequitable, but I think that either scenario is really, really unlikely.
Right. I mean, if either scenario happens, then something's really amiss with the whole project, because they shouldn't bring that much in, because it's hard to get from where they are to, like, $50 million payroll. But if they were...
I hope they do.
If they only bring in an extra million-dollar payroll, then it's probably, there's something else going on.
And we're able to, too, during those taxes...
Correct.
... supply them to each year. If we have concerns or issues, or we don't see it coming in, then we can start problems.
But we can share those concerns. We've got to have them.
Correct.
I think either seems unlikely, and I just, on first read, it seemed odd that, you know, no minimum, but then there was a cap. But I think, again, the extremes are so unrealistic that I think I'm uncomfortable.
Did you get the message?
Yes.
I can hear her teeth chattering over here.
Sorry. You're, I'm feeling good. And the snowman and the snowflake, she was a big hit to me when they were full.
Would you like my coffee, sir?
No, he's taking care of it.
Snowman, snowflake, snowman, snowflake. It's called Neat Walker.
You keep all the students awake in here, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? 4.4, discussion of the high school and junior high school cooler, freezer quotations and need for urgent necessity.
Yes, sir, member, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We, we've been talking about this a little bit on and off for a while. The walk-ins and coolers at junior high and high school were put in several years ago, and they, they, we've been working with them ever since Kathy Corr has been here almost two years ago now. And we've been trying to get some issues fixed with them, and the, the high school especially is to a point where they, there's no way to fix the problems that they have. So they're failing on a regular basis, and we're trying to muddle through until we can get them fixed. And so what happened is, we were trying to fix these as we were going along, and while we were trying to fix them, Kathy was in the process also of getting quotations on what needed to be fixed. Because part of the process of trying to get them repaired showed issues that were long-term problems that had been there, that just hadn't been seen. The high school, the one, the floor has fallen so much in that walk-in that there is a fairly large space that creates some big ice dams, and then we've got some other water, air and water infiltration problems with those two coolers. So we were hoping to be able to fix them this year, but they weren't able to do that. So, um, so basically, what, what we've got is, in order for us to get this in place before the school year starts, we can't go through the normal bid process, because we don't have enough time for them to be able to, to, you know, authorize it, to do the five-week bid time that I need, and then get a cooler and freezer in here. Because they're, they're, um, not, but they're specially made because of the size. They've got, both the high school and the junior high, for some reason, have a weird triangular shape to them instead of a big square, like most of them do. I don't know why. All the, we have a lot of triangular pieces in our buildings here in Springbrough. So, which, you know, it's nice aesthetically, but really bad when you're trying to put a freezer. Plus, the walk-in at the high school actually has a support weed in the middle of it that they have to deal with. So, which is another bizarre thing. So, we've got that, we've been talking about this for a while. The OO6 account, which is food service, they have approximately $800,000, I believe.
$821,000. They start the year with $8.4, and they usually end up out of the state.
Right. And so they're, you know, they operate in the black of the year, which is a godsend. They're required by law to do that, but a lot of places supplement food service. And here, it's very well run, I mean, they, it's amazing what they do with how much money they spend. So none of this money comes out of the general fund dollars. It's only out of the food service fund, which comes from, you know, the reimbursement, the money they get from the federal government for free reuse reimbursement, and then from paying for lunches and stuff like that. So none of it comes out of the general fund. The reason that we have to do it in urgent necessity is the fact that I can't get it done in time to, to meet the needs of going through the formal bid process and making sure that we have them up and running before school starts on the middle of August, because it's such a short summer.
It's urgent.
Excuse me? Yeah, they definitely have to.
So what's your process then to purchase that?
So once, once, if you approve this tonight under urgent necessity, then we'll cut the POs next week, basically.
And how do you...
They don't have to go through the bid process?
We've got, we've already got quotes. Here, these are the quotes that Kathy got. We've got at least five quotes for each of the walk-in cooler combinations. And then the one that, that she selected, there was, uh, you know, an additional discount for making sure we got it done, you know, before June 1st, because it's not that it's, we're after the fact, so...
You did get multiple quotes.
Yes, I have, we have five quotes per building.
How is that different than the other process?
Okay, the...
Because it sounds like you did get five.
Well, we got five quotes, because that's, we try to get as many as you can when you're, when you're going through the process. Three is what you really want, minimum, and as many. On the normal bid process for, um, under the requirements for public entities, you have to get approval by the board to, to start the bid process. It has to appear a local publication, and then a minimum of a week later, then it has to be published on either your website or, again, in the newspaper. Then there has to be a two-week waiting period before the bids can be due. And then you take the lowest, most responsible bidder to the board. Now, sometimes you end up with one bid, sometimes none, sometimes fifty, you know, on a normal bid process. In this process, the quote process, basically, you go out and you tell people, "Here, this is what I need. Give me what you think is what's going to fit, or make it work, make it better." So she was working with these folks, and, you know, we had several different companies quote, and this is the most, the most cheapest, most responsible quotation that we could see.
That's it.
So that's what the difference is.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions from the public? 4.5, discussion of ground lease to Mike Farm Enterprises.
Yes, we've got that. Out of five points for, ever since five points has been in existence, Mike Farm Enterprises has leased approximately 14.24 kilable acres that they plant corn on, that's right behind the high school. Which is good for us, because then we don't have to cut it, so we don't have to mitigate it, they do. The only thing different this year over other years is, is they had asked us for a three-year commitment as opposed to just a one-year commitment. They've been coming back every year, but, you know, they, they, they kind of, they missed that, kind of a prima, uh, prime opportunity at the end of February, beginning of March, where it was nice and dry, that they would have liked to have gotten some work done on the fields. But because we didn't have the agreement in place, they legally, on their own insurance and our, could not have worked the field. So that's why they're asking for a three-year lease this time. They pay us $110 per acre, per year, to do that, and so that's what this agreement is. It's just something, and we won't have to come back for another couple of years now, but every year we've approved this agreement with them.
Is that the similar amount per acre that we've received in the past?
Yes. It actually, up until last year, or two years ago, they, the, the, the school district didn't charge them at all. It was just two years ago, I think, where we asked, we just told them we want to get a, we wanted to get a fee for it. And $110 an acre, I called around and checked with some other farmers, that was a reasonable fee for leasing the land, and Mike Farms was okay with that. So, so that's why we went, that's why we get a little bit, it's not a lot, but it's a little bit for the...
And even though it looked like it's a three-year deal, but we have an option, right?
Yes, if, if, for some reasons, we need that land to build another building, whatever, we can, we can cancel within, I forget when...
I think it was 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days, so, which I don't see.
So this covers then for things like the weather...
Correct. If, if, if it's favorable and they get the fields stirred early, they can turn the field...
But our hands aren't tied if we ever decide to do something else.
Correct.
Any questions, public? Alright, 4.8, discussion of replacement staff computers.
Alrighty. We will be coming to you for approval. They didn't have that in order.
It's not.
No.
Let's go 4.6, John, is that a fact?
That's good.
I think you better use... Yeah, check random, I keep you on your head.
That's right.
As many items as John brings, I'm going to take a break.
I know, right, it's alright. It's one of those, it's one of those months where it's just all hit, and then I won't have anything to rely on.
You said that last month.
No, not last month.
I guess, I guess we need to fix the pavement at Clear Creek and...
Well, we've got, what we've got is, in our, in our five-year forecast, we've got a certain amount set aside to do certain things. And then Todd wanted to add a little bit more into the pavement for this time, so we're looking at trying to do about $150,000 worth of pavement, and I want to concentrate those... And I want to concentrate those at Clear Creek and Five Points. For years at Five Points, we've had issues with not enough parking. And the majority of that needs to be in the front, because that's where the majority of our lack of place is. Plus, it's so moist up there, as soon as you go off the edge of the pavement, it's mud. There's nothing in between pavement and mud. So, but, our first priority on this piece also is to finish Clear Creek. Over the break, we ended up getting a really good deal on some pavement there, thirty thousand dollars worth of pavement, that's how much it cost, that's all that pavement cost was, thirty-two thousand dollars, which is really inexpensive, it's amazing. And they were able to come do it right then during spring break, that's why it was so cheap, because they had a window, their plant was open, they had enough. So, we've got part of that, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars should finish that pavement out, give us a road that will run off of that new pavement back to where the buses drop off, and it'll have a big turn, you know, big circle area. And so that's where parent drop-off and pickup will be then.
Get them off of being strung down.
So, they'll get them off the street, they'll be picking up, dropping off in the back, and then when they come back out, the drive that we have the cones along right now would be the exit for parent drop-off. That way, the parent pickup and drop-off exit will be different than where the buses go there and there. So, between what we want to do at Five Points and what we want to do at Clear Creek, we're estimating about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. So we have to start the bid process. So that's all I'm asking for tonight, is just approval from you all, and that just takes a vote to approve us to start the bid process. And it'll be in the paper, it'll be on the website, it'll be a two-week wait, and then we'll come back to you with the first opportunity in May after that for an approval there. You know, within the next week, I have to get all the paperwork together that I need to have the people's bid on.
Well, I kid John about how much he has on there, but the issue is here, because he and I meet about this often, is as far as our facilities in this district, this district has not had much work over the years. Over the last four years, it's not been by choice most of it, it's been by necessity. People falling through roofs because they haven't been maintained. I mean, we have to take care of the district, and we're at a point, we just can't squeeze much more out of what we have. We have got to be able to repair things. And we're larger now than we've ever been, we're almost at six thousand kids. Clear Creek is working out beautifully, much better than we thought, actually, in terms of being a fully functional school. So now's the time to go ahead and finish that building off, because it's gonna be there for good. The addition there last year is working out great, but there are some things that we need at Five Points. Even after we moved a whole grade level out of there, they still are over a thousand, just broke a thousand. So, we need the space. There's a lot of times we're having to send our equipment out there to fix the ground and regrade and sow grass, because people drive off, there's nowhere else to park. The staff is so large, there's nowhere left to park. So they park in the grass and sync up to their axle, and we're getting them out, having to fix things, and it's a problem. Not that, John's going to, just kidding. At the same time, John has a lot on here, because these are things that are just, when you see him come with an urgent necessity, it's falling apart.
So where are we adding the parking at Five Points?
It's gonna be in the front.
It is gonna be in the front.
So, we're gonna extend the sides there, and my intent is hopefully to come toward the detention area a little bit with another row. So that we'll be able to, I won't say double the amount of places in there, but probably add about seventy percent more than parking spaces.
So there's enough room there to put another row before?
Correct. That's the intent.
Not that it'll fall off.
Yeah, it's gonna, it falls off.
Well, and, you know, you don't want to go too far into the detention basin, because that's what that is, is the detention basin. So, on a really big rain, that thing is supposed to fill up with water. So you don't want to put asphalt too far in there, so that you have a big rain and then everybody's car is underwater. So, that's why you have to figure out how far can you go reasonably right now without anticipating. I mean, you can see out there about where the water line has ever been, and that's not, we've got, I can get a whole lot of oil in that one.
Well, another reason we put it out front is that it's just safe. When you force people to enter through the front of the building, it's safer, instead of putting it out back for the teacher's park, because then you get in a position where you need to leave doors unlocked, so people don't have to walk all the way around if it rains or if they're elderly, it has to be out front.
Well, and Five Points, you know, unlike Dennis that has a few places here and there you can add spots, Five Points adds the front and the very back.
Yep.
That's it. There are no other places, because everything else is a detention area right around the front, so.
Roughly, how many spaces do you know how many to add?
I don't, I'm hoping to get about thirty. I think we've got right around thirty or so out front, and I'm hoping to add about that much, we need twice, but I'm only gonna guarantee probably about twenty-five.
A lot of people, well, they're new buildings, why don't they have enough pavement? The day the building's open, obviously, why open up Dennis Elementary itself in the same direction? We couldn't do a two-grade level function anytime, because we've never had enough parking there. So, all of these buildings were that way. I mean, you build a building, you stay with the budget, you never have enough. So on that, the pavement, we always knew it was gonna be something additional. Unfortunately, at Five Points, it's a much greater issue than it is at Dennis. I think, does Dennis have more?
No, neither.
The exact same?
Neither, neither, not exactly the same. It's fashioned a little differently, but remember too, Dennis has extra roadway around it that Five Points doesn't have. Parking spaces, yes, but Dennis has more asphalt because of where it's located, so the parking is just fixed.
They're on party day, people park all over the roadway.
Oh, yeah.
We do play in the mud there, too.
Correct, yes.
We do play in the mud there, too. But if you know.
And when we end up, when we end up to adding some more pavement, there'll be some more out there.
Thank you.
I lived there when they didn't have grass, so that's a whole thing, real fun.
So just, real quick again, I know Johnny touched on this briefly, but this is, part of this is incremental to what was assumed in the five-year?
Correct. Well, it was, we...
A hundred thousand dollars.
Excuse me?
I asked for a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so, I'm putting in fifty, that was in the five-year, and then Todd asked Tara to add another hundred into that.
So it's not a dumb deal, he's just getting started. Once the five-year forecast is complete, we're gonna have to look at if it all works.
Right.
Correct.
Fair. Just because we start the process and accept bids, doesn't mean we're...
Correct. Because until you actually accept the bids, nothing is available.
There's a number of things that are additional, not a lot, in the five-year, but if they don't fit, they'll be pulled out, we will not get more.
Right, so this is a hundred K is the incremental amount, fifty was already in?
Correct.
When are you hoping to do, like, to finish off Clear Creek and to do the Five Points?
Well, that would be, hopefully, after June 1st, in between June.
So before the beginning of the school year?
Correct.
Once the teacher's last work bid is done.
Well, that, plus, once we start getting some funds, because my funds are tapped out from this year, there's no extra, so. I already told my guys to stop buying stuff, so.
Four point seven, discussion of replacement phone system and Pro Long Call.
The current phone system that we have was installed in two thousand and six when the new buildings were built. It was purchased on a ten-year lease. So, the lease is done, we made our last payment this year, so we have a distinct need to replace the system. So, we've been looking for about six months on what to do, what not to do. If we did a full purchase and then we hosted our own like it is now, it's fairly labor-intensive, and then, you know, we'd still be within the same dollar figures, but, you know, we run pretty thin staff in technologies, you know, that shows what we're testing, how, you know, there's not a whole lot of extra there. So, what we did is, we went out, we've got, we requested quotations from Swoka, from Pro Long Call, and from, from Forward Edge is our contractor that does our technology coordination. And they got with another company that gave us a quotation. In looking at the systems, Pro Long Call is the one that we would like to recommend for approval for this. It was a little bit more inexpensive in terms of the upfront costs, and the annual cost will be much, much better than what we would be getting with the other system there with Forward Edge. This is a completely hosted system, so everything will be ported over to this company, they will manage it, they will manage the phones, they will manage everything. If we need changes, we contact them. If there's any break into the phones, things like that, they're responsible for making sure that gets fixed and all. So, it will take a load off of our people. In addition, because it's a hosted system, we'll be porting all our numbers over to them, so another thousand dollars a month that we pay right now to Windstream will go away also. So, I anticipate us saving probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars a month over what we're currently paying on our current lease purchase and our current phone number system with Windstream. So, it'll save us money, it'll save us time and effort with our tech folks, and we'll have new phones.
So it saves us two thousand a month of what we're currently paying all in between the lease and some of the other technology costs?
Correct.
Does that include that two thousand savings a month, does that include sort of the upfront?
No, the upfront cost, the upfront cost is, the payback on that's about three years. So, if we don't, right now, we're recommending a two-year contract, so if we don't renew with them, then we can still keep the phones and it would, you know, we'd have to change to a different system, or whatever at that point in time. But the payback for the upfront cost is three years. Which, that's fairly common with most of the systems that's out there. It's a lot better than the ten-year lease that we were paying for before.
So in terms of the impact to the five-year, it's really not, let's just assume we did this, it's not an impact to the total, it's not gonna affect the cash balance, it just changes when it actually, we're occurring more upfront.
We had this built into the five-year. The upfront cost for this year is in the five-year forecast.
Right.
From this coming school year. So, and like I said, what we'll be doing is, we should be saving about two thousand dollars a month.
So that is actually true saving versus the five-year, because the five-year included the upfront.
Correct. That's why we built that in last year or two years ago, I forget when.
See, John's there, we have plans for everything. Like the teacher computers coming up, they're already planned. We knew that was gonna be a cost of the five-year, but we had to get it all through. Well, we're a junior high library. We're gonna take that down to just one.
Okay.
You wanna kick you out of this room?
Okay, any other questions? Four point eight, discussion of replacement staff computers.
The staff computers are in their third, fourth year. Third and fourth year. So, they're getting tired, and so, we have it in our five-year forecast that these get redone. They are coming off a lease, we did lease these, so this will be also a lease purchase with Dell. The anticipation is somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars or so for three hundred and seventy-five computers, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five computers. Much better in terms of power and flexibility. They don't have drives to come with them, a lot of the laptops for some reason don't have drives, but we will be purchasing external drives for the teachers that need, you know, a DVD to be able to play in their classroom, things like that. But this is right about the same cost that what we're paying now on an annual basis for the current lease for the computers. But the huge positive that this does, not only does it get the staff with a better computer than is desperately needed, but then the current staff computers will be recycled and give us much more computing possibilities for the testing and all that, because we'll be able to repurpose them for other needs. We're not getting rid of those computers, we'll be putting them in other places, we'll be making them available for classrooms or testing or whatever needs to be. So, another three hundred and seventy-five computers will be available for whatever needs that we have in the future. Especially for the testing hall, because the testing platforms don't need to be real intense on computing power, because most of it's online. So there'll be excellent computers that we could use for the testing, for other things like that.
Let me give you a touch of background on that. Actually, this whole technology plan was before Tara Handjob over here. And that was, I will say, a former board member, Mr. Patrani, he helped with that a lot, it was one point one million originally. And the plan always was, in the fourth year, when they're replaced, that those are used out, plus we're staying up with technology. Because when we put this into place, it had been like seven years since they had purchased any computers, and there were like a hundred eighty-five refurbished stationary computers purchased. At that point, our kids hardly even used technology. Now, and I thought it was funny, when we went to pull the technology to do testing, it was like, I don't know how to teach without technology. Everyone was frantic, and so they met with me and I said, this is the best problem I've ever heard. Because you know what this means? People are using what hasn't been purchased. That was the whole goal, is to deliver instruction via technology and it be used, and it's happened. Because it was very difficult to pull those computers to be used, and we worked through it, but it was almost like people forgot what a hard copy piece of paper was, which is not a bad thing, when you look at how much we're making a copy. So, it's working out well. So John, thanks for pulling all this together, I know that's a ton of work.
We won't be requesting a vote on this tonight, we just, I wanted to bring, this was another thing I'm prepping you for, so probably the next meeting we'll have that, those contracts available for you to approve the actual dollar amounts. But it's gonna be pretty much what is in our forecast and what we've been planning on. So, and we've got the assurance from Dell, who we're gonna buy them from, that as long as we have that approval before the end of April, they'll be able to meet our needs and get them to us in time for that.
So it's the same company with you, right?
Correct. So we'll be able to deploy these at the beginning of the year.
And you said it's a lease purchase, is that?
Correct. Which is the same thing we're under now.
Same thing we're under.
Correct.
How many computers are we currently pulling out of the classroom for testing?
Depends on, it depends on the building. In this building here, every single Chromebook was pulled out of the classroom, plus...
Which is like, how many?
Most teachers in the classroom here have ten, if you're core content, ten Chromebooks, but they had to be redistributed, and they were wiped over spring break. So what then they had to do is, they didn't have access, and even my computers are being used for testing as well.
And we brought a hundred fifty computers, then fifty Chromebooks to Dennis and fifty for Five Points to augment what they have here.
Okay, but I'm trying to get a big picture, because we don't all test at the same time. So is this three hundred and seventy-five computers, how much does this help us with not having to take, like, are we gonna take fewer computers from each teacher, or are we gonna not use them from one school? Like, how is this gonna help us?
The intent would be that, yeah, if we could redistribute those here, then we wouldn't have to take as many from the classrooms, then we wouldn't have to take any from Dennis and Five Points. Dennis and Five Points had enough, we were able to leave a certain amount within the classrooms that are doing ten marks.
Okay, that was my question, for those like math classes.
Correct. So we were able to leave enough, because they have a larger volume, because the PTAs have purchased a lot in the past, and therefore, you know, we're able to, and we purchased more for the ten marks. So we have more there. The high school, they had enough, we only ended up, I think, I think we pulled all of them from math and social studies, and then a few of the, and then the carts that were free. So, a lot of the classrooms still have something there. This building, the junior high, was the most hit by this, because they don't have the volume of equipment, and they have big classes, we're testing, you know, all the seventh grade at one time, all the eighth grade, and so you're looking at needing five hundred devices at one time, almost.
So it significantly helped, it's not like this is just a drop in the bucket, it significantly helped.
It will significantly help, correct.
Okay, awesome.
Well, keep in mind, when I talk about things we need in buildings, big picture look, the more technology we have, the more digital textbooks we deliver via that technology. The digital textbooks are probably sixty percent less than the hardback books. So if people are out there watching this evening, I don't want them to think, oh my, they have all these computers. We wish every student in this district had a computer that we own. We have almost half right now that have a computer owned by us. We have tried BYOT. The problem with bringing your own device is when you get into these digital textbooks and staff needs to work on those, we are limited. When you look at the federal government of what we're allowed to look at on one of these, there are so many privacy acts on technological devices. Most districts are going to where they own them all, and then look at some different things of how parents can perhaps pay a fee. But what we're going to have to look at long-term is how we have tech, technology for all kids supplied by us, because it saves so much on the textbook. And this year, we'll spend three hundred thousand on tests. My first year was almost eight hundred thousand. So we're saving a lot of money by buying digital texts. Plus, when kids aren't carrying around a pack of books in their backpack, it's a whole lot easier on the body. And I know some people are going to be like, boy, he's stretching for that one. No, really, I'm not. If you go out there and read research on the impact of book bags on a child's spine, there is significant research out there about the impacts of that. When they have a Chromebook and a folder, less for them to maintain, it's exactly what they're going to have to use in college and in a job. I mean, look at all of us, none of us hardly brought a book bag. We have, I lived my whole life on this thing. We're training our kids for the next step. So it is something we're going to have to look at long-term. But we did feel the pinch with testing, that all of our kids didn't have technology, because we had to pull them. So that does mean for a couple of weeks, teachers aren't utilizing technology like they typically do. Of course, when they test, happens today that their peers aren't having time to teach them this stuff. That's an issue right there.
Okay, four point nine, discussion of Title I elementary summer school positions.
John?
Hey, that's what, now we're testing tonight.
Go ahead, Lee.
Sorry, I made her look really bad, too. Every year, we have to do an extended school year for certain students. So for the Title I summer school, that is funded by Title I, the money that we receive for that, we will be requesting positions for May thirty-first through June seventeenth, for three hours a day at a rate of twenty-seven fifty-one an hour. And that's by contract, that's where that dollar figure comes from. And then on May twenty-seventh, there'll be a two-hour planning meeting for staff in order to prepare for this. These are the kids that aren't progressing well enough within reading mostly, maths, that need that extra help. So we're going to be using two math intervention folks here at the junior high. There'll be two math intervention folks at Dennis, and then eight reading intervention folks at Dennis. And also included in that, there's some transportation costs, because we do transport these kids to ensure that they get there. If you don't transport these kids, a lot of times, they just don't have any way to get to school. Most of our schools are not, you know, ones that are real easy to walk to for a lot of these younger kids. So they will be, there'll be staffing for transportation based on the needs of the students. So we don't know exactly how many bus drivers or if there is an aid or not that we need also, depending on the kids that sign up for this next week coming.
Is this open to all students that qualified for title services, or did they have to?
These are the students that didn't meet the, basically, the third grade guaranteed piece. And so that's who's getting the extra pieces here.
And then they're going to be tested at the end of the summer session to make sure they pass that third grade?
That is the intent.
And if they don't, are they given another chance with a different type of a test?
No, what they will do then is, based on how they do in this piece, they will have to get with the incoming teacher next year to develop a plan on how they then can get them back up ready for that fall, it's third grade OAA, but it's not, it's third grade A R test that will be given to meet the requirements of the third grade guarantee.
So they would be put back in third grade?
They might be put back in third grade for reading only.
And then if they pass that fall assessment, could they be put in third grade?
Then they'll be moved up to the fourth grade at any time. Or if they, if during that ramp-up time, the teachers feel that they've made progress and they give them an assessment, which I can't tell you exactly what that assessment is. But if they give them an assessment, they determine that they've reached that grade level requirement to meet third grade guarantee, they can move up to the fourth grade at any time.
Oh, okay.
It's just, we have to certify that they met those requirements that's required in law for the third grade guarantee.
Historically, if they went through this summer school, they historically have passed that third grade because-
Correct, we don't have a whole lot of those students, and they, these, this summer program, extended school year is very intense. And at least up until this point, they have not had one that hasn't met that needs by the end of that program.
I've had a couple of parents that have asked me about this program, that's why I've asked.
Correct.
Karen's got-
Can I interject, and I only know about this because I've helped with some of the writing to the parents, in that the third grade population that may be in danger of not moving on to fourth grade are also being offered an opportunity, I think it's one of the Terranova tests, this spring. So those, and I only know this because I helped write some of the communication on this. So those families will look at that, and they can request that their child have that alternate test, so that they know before this school year even ends, that whether or not their child will move on to fourth grade. And then there are those other additional opportunities that you already talked about. But I just wanted to mention that, because families may be getting that letter, and if they see this on TV or hear about it, there's an opportunity in the spring, there's the second Ohio test, and then there's the summer opportunities too. So there's multiple opportunities for these kids.
We're already providing, when it came in from an elementary standpoint. If they score, what is it, below fifty, down to forty-two is one, and then below that's another. We are to provide intervention after school as well, a couple days a week.
All right, thanks.
Four point ten.
Yes, pay-to-participate fees passes and season passes. Each year, we have to bring these to the board for approval, there is no change to these. As far as season packet passes or like tickets to get in the game, the Lees control a lot of that. They did have a petition out to increase by one dollar, but we have not heard back on it. I go to a meeting, I think it might be next week or the week after, half a day at another center with the high school principal, our athletic director, and they're going to talk more about some things going on in the world of high school sports and athletics. But right now, the pay-to-participate fees, the board says. And our goal, what Tara and I have been working on, is to develop a school system that has a sustainable economic or financial structure to some extent. So right now, I don't think we see the need to increase pay-to-participate fees. Our athletic department, over the last three years, has been pretty much right on budget each year. So if anything, we're getting more athletes, which helps a lot of these things. So those fees are not, they're the same as last year. And we don't anticipate them increasing if we come back to you, it's because the Lees have the need to.
The individual student sports pass, fifty dollars, that gets them into basketball games or whipping ball, is that right?
That is my understanding, it's for the whole year. And I will say this, that I want the board to consider this. We have noticed a drop-off in the attendance of our students at our athletic games. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to look at that. I mean, really, one of the goals of sports is to give kids an outlet. I would much rather the kids be here in the stands than not in the stands and out with their friends somewhere. So that fifty dollars, I think we're going to have to look at that. I've met with the coaches, we'll probably talk to the athletic council. But it's important to have the kids at these games, not only for the athletes there, but just to build camaraderie of the school community. And it's something I do think we need to look at. Also, when we look at our senior citizens and things like that, we may be looking at some different things as well, because I want them here as well, I mean, they're paying property taxes here. If they don't have kids in school, they should have some other benefits. And I think that's some things we need to look at. Now, a lot of people out there saying, well, he's just going to give everything for free. No, these types of things, in the scheme of things, do not cost a lot of money. But we also have to think, the more students we get here, the more senior citizens we get here, when they buy soda and candy and things of that nature, it goes right back to our boosters. And the reason we have a sustainable athletic budget is because of our boosters. It's hardly ever publicized, but they are paying a vast majority of our athletic program, and band pretty much pays it all. So on both of these things, it's underestimated how much they get back to the community. Whenever we have an athletic event, they're doing the concession stands. So the more people we put in the stands, the more people that's going to access these concession stands. So it's an economical decision, not just a, well, if you drop that, you're going to lose twenty-five hundred dollars on your kids. But if we don't make the twenty-five hundred, we might end up with ten thousand dollars more in the booster's pocket, which then allows them to purchase things for the kids, which is what, we don't like to parlay the money for the kids. The boosters pay for all of that, and I think that's a real misconception out there in the community. They're not raising money to purchase frivolous things for kids. They're paying things that, if they didn't do that, we would have to be thinking about middle fund.
So I have two questions with, okay, I have two questions with that. First off, have we talked to the kids as to why we're not getting them to the games?
They have talked a lot, and some of it is the financial impact. I mean, at this point in time, a lot of parents give their kids allowance and say, you've got to learn to be smart with your money.
Yeah.
And when Starbucks is five dollars a coffee cup, it's, it is really tough to be financially smart unless you're going to forego a mocha latte, I guess.
Yeah, and that's exactly, that's how it is in our family, and so that was part of the decision-making. So if that's something that we know is impacting that, at what point, like, if we're going to vote on this tonight, at what point are we going to come back in and reevaluate this? Like, what would the plan be if we decided that we wanted to consider making this lower or having a family pass? Because if you have a big family and you want to go to the football game, it's a big chunk of change to do that. And you want to support the community, you want to get out there and watch, you know, go to the football game, but it's a lot of money. So might we consider that again?
It's a pot, I can't guarantee it for next year. When you start looking at that, it's a big decision. I mean, there's a lot of things we're looking at in athletics right now that the coaches are wrong.
So what's the process, does it go to the athletic council?
That would be one of them, but right now, it needs to, our treasurer really has, we have to meet with her, they need to meet with me. We need to look at the input.
Who's they?
The coaches, the athletic director, the high school principals, one is really involved in this. Because they're at a, we didn't even look at the way the high school principal monitor the games. A lot of people would question, why are they both standing down in front of the kids? And so we moved them off to the side. I mean, a lot of times, people think we're there just to be an iron fist. They like to talk to the kids too. But if it's, people are thinking, well, they don't come to the games because it's so strict. I don't think it's that strict personally. We do have to have rule and order in there for certain people's sake. But they moved off to the side, but we still didn't really see an increase in participation. My first year here, it was unbelievable, it was unbelievable how the kids came to the games. So we're, actually, we've just started talking about it in the last month, so it's not been an awful discussion. Our basketball coach really talked about it a lot.
I think the, you know, seventy-five for adult pass and for the students fifty, I think you pay six dollars a shot if you don't buy these, which is quite a bit, that's set by the G-Walk, so these are definitely-
It's not cheap, so we need the financial impact. Well, you're looking at a budget overall, like, Mr. Beladie's brought up all these things. You can't be cutting a hundred thousand a year and a hundred thousand next thing you know, it adds up to be a lot of money. So we have to weigh it, and we pull it away. Sure is. For example, we, you know, we would like to introduce more STEM activities to our kids, they're great with this. At thirty thousand dollars, pop to some extent, if we're removing thirty out of there and adding thirty here, that's a net of sixty, you know, when it's all set up. So those things like, once we get the five-year forecast finished, we're going to be able to look for it. But I can't guarantee anyone's going to have it for next year.
But again, just to leave some point about how we work through this, are we approving anything on this tonight? It's a work session.
Which, they have to be approved.
Which item is it? It's not on the agenda, which is why it's a little-
Yeah, this is not-
It makes it not a poll.
That's why I was just confused, because it's like, it does feel like there is some time, so I was looking through the agenda, making sure I didn't miss it. So we have, I mean, I had to come to the same question, I mean, I'm looking at the document and preferences in there, and there will not be a family pass after this year. So I would just like to learn a little bit more, because I'm just new to the whole thing about the history of that and what we had. Because it sounds like we used to have one.
Yeah, we did.
The references in the document, that we don't have one now.
No, no, they were passing them around to other families.
Right, so that was the issue with, you know. But again, it's just those types of things that I'd love to learn a bit more about, but is that something that the athletic council would? I think we have a meeting coming up.
You have the athletic council, I see.
I'm on it as well.
About sports, I'm looking at the games or something.
I think we have a meeting next week, I'm just wondering if there, will you work through some of this stuff before? When would we need to approve these?
I don't know, it's the next board meeting. Well, we can talk, hey, if you guys want to know, I'm not going to say what Tara can do, but I'm pretty sure she could probably tell you how much we brought in off of the past last year. So if you want to say, we don't want the kids to pay next year, it's going to cost X number of dollars to make that happen. We can go and-
Yeah, he's goddamn mad outside.
That would be helpful, because I feel like we do have an athletic council meeting between now and then.
They get moved and called, we don't have to have-
No, there's one on the calendar, but I just don't recall.
Well, basically, these just have to be approved sometime before, yeah, before the end of summer.
I was just going to say, the only rush or deadline on approval for these is that we need to know maybe a few days before we advertise them and sell them.
Right.
So typically, we start that sale a month out from the first football game. So if we, you know, if we could know by July, that is plenty of time for all of us to mobilize what we need to do to effectively market and sell, sell the passes.
So I have a question with this, that maybe in looking at another district, if our concern was with the family pass before, are there other schools that have like an electronic thing that you have to scan?
We have, they have a different, we have some, I know on my pass, when I come in, there's some things they do check.
See, for my pass, I had to manually sign in my pass and my other- Right, and so like, to say the family passes, that other people were using them.
They don't have them, you know, if you go to an away game, the G-Walk pass, you just show it to them and sign in.
I guess whatever the question is to why we did away with the family pass, could it be something that we talk to the boosters and say, is this something that the boosters would consider working with the district on in order to increase, you know, would this be something that we could work together with? Or are there other districts that are doing this better than we are? I don't know, I mean, we're not the only district that is-
The games I go to, we have a pretty stellar way that we collect money. In our system, I go to some games, it's like, oh yeah, go ahead, go ahead. So I don't, I think we have a lot of accountability. We've been criticized for that, that we are, it's like Fort Knox to get into one of our athletic events, because we want to make sure we collect the money. I think we've taken more criticism than normal on that. We're strict about it. I mean, we block off our gates and everything.
So there's not an option for a family pass, that's what you're saying?
Well, and like Dave said, when it was researched, people while waiting in line would have the pass pass through the fence to them, if that's what it took.
But if the pass has your name, and you have to have your license that has a Lisa Babface on it?
Well, we don't check the license.
There are other Lisa Babfaces.
Here's the thing on operations, if we start checking licenses, then you have, like, Mason, and we have a crowd of ten thousand people out there, and we have to check every license. What's going to happen then, if they're not in their seats before the game starts, then you have holy havoc out there that, what are you doing? You can't do, so that's what we run into. When we really want to get technical about that or scanning something, just to have a scanner go out there, I would hate to see it cost some of that. So that's the issue of, the atmosphere to get kids in or people into a game doesn't lend itself to a very organized structure if you want to be that technical. Because right now, we have the police there, we have the gates narrowed down, and we have multiple workers there, including our own staff, to make sure we're collecting money and just not letting people walk in randomly.
Well, it's up to me, we do have a meeting on the twenty, I think, is when the next athletic council. It doesn't sound like there's enough time to sort of fully vet and explore this issue. So maybe it's something that has to sort of work over the next year. But I mean, it's something I think is worth exploring and understanding a little bit more. Yeah, running some of the numbers, I don't want to, certainly not a decision we want to rush into. So it sounds like we're going to need a little more time to work through it. But I would hope that, you know, that we can work through that into the future athletic council meetings, so that it is something that we can bring back to the board and support on, so we can make a choice on what- so that it is something that we can bring back to the board and support on, so we can make a choice on what the, the financial implications would be and can weigh all the options.
Family pass hasn't been in effect since I've been here, and it was, it wasn't in effect before I was here, so it's not something that's been reduced in recent years that I'm aware of. Now, I've, I've.
Oh, we should just take that wording off that stuff.
We actually did away with it, um, Mr. Lewis's first year here.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, and, and I'm looking, I'm just doing some quick research right here. It has more to do, there's also the implication that a family pass would save you money. Comparable districts to ours, family passes are, are two hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars. Um, so we were presenting the family pass as a cost savings, um, that, that again, suddenly, you know, I already have four kids I don't want anymore, but you would throw a couple more kids in the van and, and then they would.
Take them away.
That's what was happening, is suddenly my family of four became a family of eight. And then that, so then that becomes a savings or, you know, and that is where you saw a little bit of abuse with that. But also, the idea that a family pass is a, is a huge savings, at least in similar districts to us, is, is not necessarily the case.
But every time we bring passes up, we have this much discussion going on, so I can hear about it.
Well, we're new to it, so we didn't get a habit of that yet, but what's happened?
We're having, but I forgot all about what Karen said, and the problem was.
Well, I would recommend taking off that there will not be a family pass after this year off of the actual form, just if we want.
Thank you.
Already been noted, really.
Well, actually, what we were gonna say, the new board member wanted the family pass discontinued, so. Dr. Love's gotta take out a loan. All right.
Okay. Back to you, John.
Back to me, yes, thank you, sir.
Staff members of the energy.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, we have, uh, we are ending, coming to the end of our energy project that was started two years ago. Uh, we actually began the process as early as two thousand thirteen, when I first came here. Uh, and it, as we were developing the, the, uh, the project, um, you know, we had a lot of roof issues at Clear Creek, S.I., um, actually, all the buildings with the exception of the junior high was having roof issues at that point in time. So in, in conjunction with the, um, the energy project, we were also working on getting approval for some roof, roof work to be done. And so we ended up having approvals for some roof work to be done and an energy project to be done. Um, the little biter on the roof ended up being the same contractor that was working with the, the contractor, WTI, that got the, the energy project. So we, we took those two projects, um, the, uh, the roof proj, the roof project total was about one point six four billion dollars. The energy project minus the roof was about three point seven six billion dollars. And the, that was the amount of money that the board approved in two separate actions two years ago. Uh, and so we were anticipating, in addition to that, based on what we were, the amount of work we were doing, because we, we chose WTI because it was a little bit bigger project, but it had a lot better possibility for energy savings. So we were gonna save a lot more money than we would have if we'd have taken, Johnson Controls was the, our second best project that we had. We have five total that they gave us proposals. So we were anticipating, hopefully, getting up to upwards of six hundred thousand dollars in rebates, which would have covered all of these two projects with the loan and the rebates that we were anticipating getting. So as we've gone through this process, um, we've, you know, we ran into a few things, just like everything. You got a five million dollar project, there's a few things that get missed. We had a few lights that were missed, and, and we, so we, we had some, some change that we needed to make in the auditorium, in the LGI, the comments here got missed, um, in terms of the lighting piece. Um, and then as the light progressed, we ended up making the decision to bring first grade to Clear Creek. And so rather than spending the money that was gonna be spent at Clear Creek and then having brandy lights and those lights that hang down, those, they're called pendant lights, um, we made the decision to go ahead and do a cost change to the project that would add about a hundred thousand dollars to the project to, um, you know, take down those pendant lights and then put in, um, in the in-grid lights, which made for a much better educational piece, educational piece for the students that are now at Clear Creek, because the roofs are, are so much better lit, it's such a better learning environment than the hanging down lights that had been installed in the sixties. Um, so based on this, basically, we ended up with, um, about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that we, of rebates that went back to the lighting contractor from the utilities, Duke Energy mainly. Um, and then, uh, the, the goods and services that we received from H-Surgical was the full amount, good job. We've got, I mean, for the first time in many years, uh, the, the intermediate school doesn't leak, Clear Creek doesn't leak. Uh, we're not having roof shingles blow off the dentists and fight points, which is another wonderful thing. Uh, WTI has come across with their goods and services of the three point seven million, plus the, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of those lighting ads that were there, um, and then a few other things. And so we've got, we've had a really good project. We're saving, uh, more than was anticipated, uh, up until this point. We've already saved three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in energy. We've still got three months left to go, um, in terms of energy, so we're saving, we should be saving somewhere between fifty to a hundred thousand dollars more than what we anticipated. Uh, so we, it's an excellent project, it was a good project, we've done it all, everything great all along. The, the reason that we're gonna be here, and there's an action on the board item, is we owe Trump Co. five hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents to complete the project. Their fiscal year ends April thirtieth, um, so we have to, because it's a two-year-old project, we need to pay them to complete the project. They've completed their, done their due diligence, um, and one of the reasons why is we're a little bit late getting to this point is we were trying to get some information from them to be able to justify making these payments, um, and we just got that on Tuesday this week, actually. So that's why this ended up going out right away. So if they don't get paid before April thirtieth, they have to write it off as bad debt. And their bad debt becomes bad debt against us in terms of our credit rating could take a hit. So we have to work, and that's why we've been working very hard with WTI to make sure we get all the information so that we could get this to the point where we can do it. So the, we, we had approvals two years ago for five point five million dollars, so the approvals are there, but because we were hoping to get up to six hundred thousand in rebates, we were hoping to not have to come back to the board and use that general fund money to finish the project, we were anticipating getting these rebates. We ended up getting a hundred and fifty-three thousand so far, but that's already was taken up in these change orders that were done, um, that we didn't end up adding money into the project, but it was used in the project. So we're gonna need to pay this five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and so the best way we, we got, we met and talked, and the best way for us to do it, we feel, is for the board to take an action to, to approve a transfer from the general fund into a permanent improvement fund, pay this so that we don't end up with a debt issue or a, or a, any kind of hit to our credit rating, which is extremely important to the school district. Uh, and then we will be getting back, uh, an anticipated one hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollars in rebates. The, uh, WTI is supposed to file those tomorrow. Um, we've been pushing them to file those so that we can get it. But, you know, those rebates usually take somewhere between six to twelve weeks to come back. So it's not enough time for us to, to wait for those rebates to pay. So we're, in the end, we're not gonna end up with, with that little, um, and in addition, that one of the things I forgot to, to, to bring up before is the other thing that we're looking at, there are tax incentive pieces that can be used for companies on these reap, on, not the rebates, but on some of the things that were done. We can't reap the benefits of tax incentives because we don't pay the tax to the federal government. But if we're gonna still work with WTI to see if there's any of those, um, tax incentives that are out there that we can transfer to a company and then they reimburse us for those tax things. It's completely legal, it's done all the time, but that might be another way to help offset some of this, this five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. We, we're gonna, I'm, I'm very, very confident we're gonna get a hundred and sixty, we may get upwards of two hundred, that Duke will make that determination at that time. So we're really looking at that, somehow trying to offset that up in three eighty-four.
Dave reports.
I have one question. I thought of after we talked previously. Are there, with what we have saved so far, are those set savings? Or are there, is there any chance that we would be saving any more with this energy project?
Well, we, we're, right now, we're, they're guaranteeing us to save, how much is our debt payment?
About three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
So three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, we've already saved three ninety at this point in time, so. So we're hoping to save another fifty between now and the end of the fiscal year. So that alone right there is, will help offset this. And if we continue to see these type of savings, that's anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year in savings that wasn't included in this, that will free up on our general fund, which helps this piece also.
So if we're saving that much more this year, then next year, we would anticipate seeing that same amount of savings?
Well, we would hope so, I mean, that's what.
It's gonna, I mean, I think it kind of platcos at some point.
Correct.
And then sometimes it may go a little under, but what they guarantee is that every year the debt payment is, that they guarantee that the savings will be as high or equal to that payment as we know. So some years we might save more, but then some of the debt payment is doing freeze over time as well, so then if we get to the point where, oh, we just cover that one, then we might have to.
Correct.
But, but. People who haven't heard is able to tell exactly how the savings are coming in, and it's, it's gonna sound, because not a lot of people believe that they're coming at the level they are.
Correct.
They're coming in small, so.
Yes, it's good. It was a good project.
I'd like to see this guy go over this.
Yeah, I have this really bad one.
So it's not a, the debt payments aren't, it's not a sort of flat amount, fluctuation?
Right. But it never goes, I think the highest is.
We started it out, actually, the highest was like, yeah, the same three, I had a debt schedule. What they learned it was, the first debt payment had to be due pretty close after the, you know, the dealer approached the cost as well, such that they had a discussion. So what they did was, they made the first, because that payment is a little lower in time for the project to fully see the savings. So then some of that later, the debt payments have to be higher because some of the first ones have been lower, so it can fluctuate. Guarantee will, that's why I think it's kind of given us a, because we know that that guarantee is in there, that they have to write some check, and for some reason, we'll make one year of savings, so come the rest of the past promise.
Even if, like, this is a lower year and we're getting more, even during the higher years, and even if we don't reach it during the higher year, even though we made more this year, they'll still cover it?
Correct. It's, it's a year, it's one, one fiscal year at a.
At a time?
Each year they can announce.
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
To that year. To the promised savings. And we make sure that the debt payment's turned down on who it wants, they're the promised savings.
Correct.
So the structure is in a way, yeah. But I, we watch it like a hawk, because we're, just in case, we wanna make sure that we're able to.
Right.
Get a review, that's how it was promised to be, to be, to hold it to that.
I was just gonna ask, and we haven't seen the April, um, numbers yet, obviously, we're in the middle of April, but I mean, I know we've been running ahead from a general fund perspective, and I know there were some things that were gonna happen later in the year, but Dean, do you have a sense for how much capacity there is in the general fund to absorb something like this?
I actually got interested, I figured, say, thank you, but, um, we've actually done really well this year with our summer period, without catastrophic costs, you know, and as I said, our first year, we got fifty-four thousand, and so then they took it over in the fall, and we got, um, two hundred and sixty-four thousand or so last year. And I just finished calculating everything, just this year, and how much is there to pool around the state set aside each year? So this is depending on however many districts and what the dollar amount that they turn in and submit for how much off their costs. There's only so much money in the pool, so the percentage goes down based off of how much people submit. But if they give around fifty percent, which is what we received, about fifty percent is what we received last year, so just looking at that margin, we get five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so that almost just took care of.
That's special, huh?
Yeah.
And that's, you have to also look at it, though, if you remember us coming last year, um, we had several high, high needs students who did it within, like, a little year. So those costs, it's always a year over years, they have to wait for the years over, and then the next year's gonna be catastrophic reimbursement for the previous year. So we're getting reimbursed this year for costs for last year. Our costs were a lot higher last year, I think they were like four hundred and some odd thousand dollars more. So, you know, and then some of the, um, private placements of people who did also more additional costs. So those are some, they have thresholds, it's thirty-two, maybe fifty, if you're category one for five, or for category, or for category six, it's thirty-two, maybe fifty, or for category one for five, it's thirty-seven, three seventy-five. So they're basically taking your entire cost for a specific, you know, SSIP, and then you subtract, you take your total cost, you subtract the twenty-seven, three seventy-five, or thirty-two, maybe fifty, which are a five, and then you are eligible for fifty percent. If it is fifty percent, it's a, or it's a draw on. So we have the ability this year, and they do give us fifty percent, but we'll, we'll get to offset them, so the, the, you'll work at that cost.
When you figure out how much you get back? This is if we're submitting more, and we're just saying.
Five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and I only had two hundred and fifty thousand anticipating by then.
That is, that's what we're submitting, or that's what we're anticipating?
That is one hundred and two hundred percent.
So they did, and they did confirm that it's a fifty percent of?
No, that's what I'm saying, I just, I estimate, I, I put one point two that I submitted, but I estimate it's about five hundred and eighty percent of that. If they come in, there's forty-two percent, you know.
And said, when do we find that out?
Actually, not quick enough. Last year, we received the money at the, before we closed the post year. So there's, there's a window, and, you know, there we go, because I think, you know, May. So until the end of May, with the cutoff year, I will know what everybody else is submitting, but I, I wanna get ours confirmed, just because.
But it's reasonable to expect we're gonna pick something up there. I mean, again, to do, the degree of which is sort of hard to tell, but we don't know what, but we're gonna pick something up there. And we do have some rebates that are sort of out there. I mean, just even beyond, we give some extra energy savings.
Correct.
You know, in this year.
Right.
That exceed the debt payments.
Right. So working on that one, they, I discussed previously from the U.S. Bank, where we have had, that, that, you know, six hundred and eighteen thousand, I think. And I'm still working with them, since that money's been sitting out there for so long, maybe they're, they're, they're counseling to be able to, from others before. So, um, they, they wanna make sure that it's still on board, a full for us, so how does that make it, when it's on there, and we can have it for them. So, I, I mean, you know, it's, so hopefully, we can get that back. What happens is, is you have to use it for debt, or you have to use it for a project like that.
For cash.
And maybe, yeah, we have, we have to, we do that. So that also, if you could get that in, they said it only takes about seven, ten days for us to get that money, but I've got it in the paper, where we look side of U.S. Bank, you know, the pool, the last goal pools, um, in order, I've got to get that first before I can do the rest of the money.
So there's some things in place that'll help mitigate this.
Correct.
So I think we still have some capability, I think, from other things in the five-year term, that we're shorting. So generally speaking, it feels as if we're gonna be okay, like, we're gonna be able to absorb it. It's not an ideal situation that we talked about, I mean, it's.
And we're pretty soon coming back to, we'll, we'll have, well, the trains were from one, you know, down onto the P.I. When the rebates come in, do those rebates go back towards the P.I. fund? So then what we can do with that, with that program is, is next year, when he starts his, in here, we'll have him take all of his capital leads that are built into the fire here, he can go ahead and take them out of that P.I. until we exhaust that P.I. money, but we get to look back there and, and there all the.
And add that a free.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, I would say it's hugely unexpected. We knew the whole time, that this was a, that it could be a possibility, so I don't think it's, it's not gonna be available. We're not gonna purchase payment, things like that, until we see how it's actually gonna end bottom line. So anything we might be looking at that was not planned in the past, we're certainly not gonna move forward on any of that until we are able to answer that question for you.
Yeah, because we want to be the first, we're still.
Right. So by the end of May, I think we have to get all this looking.
Oops, sorry, it's too many by.
Yeah. That's what I said, I'm hoping by April, we have.
That's, I'm hopeful to have everything back by the end of April, but then.